The December 10th, 2024 meeting of the St. Joseph County Council is now called to order. Please stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we come before you tonight and we thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed on this county and these people. And we pray that you will continue to offer your protection to our police officers and our corrections officers and our probation officers and all of those who serve in positions that at times are tough positions. And Lord, for all of us here as we make decisions tonight, may we remember to act justly, love mercy, and walk humbly. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up are petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. May I have a motion on the November minutes, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes for the November meeting are approved. Next up are St. Joseph County Council Board Appointments. May I have a motion on the Redevelopment Committee, please?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President, to table the St. Joe County Redevelopment tonight, commission appointments tonight.
We have a motion and a second to table? Further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katanzarite.
Did the motion come with a timeline, Mr. Fig?
No, I just said to table.
Yeah, why don't you add to January?
To our January meeting.
To our January.
2025.
Thank you.
Any further council discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission appointment or reappointment will be tabled until the January 2025 meeting. Next up, may I have a motion for either appointment or reappointments on the Housing Authority, the Parks and Recreation, the Mishawaka Penn Library Board, the St. Joseph County Sewer and Water, the St. Joseph County Property Tax Board of Appeals, and the St. Joseph County On-Site Wastewater Advisory Board, please?
I'll make the motion to approve these names for reappointment.
Why don't you go ahead and read them?
St. Joseph County Housing Authority, Randy Lemer, Mishawaka Penn Harris Library Board, Mark Bagwell, St. Joe County Parks and Recreation Board, Larry Katanzarite, St. Joe County Library Advisory Board, Ann Roat, excuse me, not that one, move to the next one, St. Joe County Sewer and Water District, Roger Naurot, St. Joe County Property Tax Assessment Boards of Appeals, Rosemary Mancini, Gloria Nabalski, and St. Joe County On-Site Wastewater Advisory Board, Tamara Harkey.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for any of these offices or boards or committees?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katanzarite.
I'd like to nominate Ann Rosen for the St. Joe County Library Advisory Board.
All right, we have Ann Rosen nominated to the St. Joe County Library Board. Are there any further nominations for any of these?
Mr. Root? I'll make the nomination of Rhonda Richards to the Library Boards.
Which one?
Do we need a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We don't have a second on the whole thing.
Oh, yeah, we only have a second for Mark, so.
I'll second it.
Okay, and then Randy, did you want to make a motion as well?
Yes, I'll make the motion for Rhonda Richards to the St. Joe County Library Advisory Board also. I'll second that motion.
Okay. Let's take these one by one then. So we have a motion to approve all of these, one of these has a contested, so we will deal with that one last. So our first one is, we had a motion to do the St. Joseph County Housing Authority, Randy Lemert. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, Randy Lemert is appointed to the St. Joseph County Housing Authority. Next up, we have Mark Bagwell, who was nominated to the Mishawaka Penn Harris Library Board. Is there any motion on that discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, Mark Bagwell is appointed to the Mishawaka Penn Harris Library Board. Next up is the St. Joseph County Parks and Recreation Board. We have a nomination of Mr. Larry Katanzarite. Is there any discussion on that nomination?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katanzarite?
Just for the record, I just want to confirm to the public and to my fellow council members that, as far as I know, and what my grandfather always told me, I'm not related to Larry Katanzarite. We're from the same small town in Italy, but we're not related.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzarite. Any further discussion?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Shetzel?
I just want to say that, you know, I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Katanzarite as the president of the Parks Board. I think he's done a fantastic job, and I'm very happy that we have the opportunity to reappoint him.
Any further council discussion on Parks? Hearing none, all in favor of Larry Katanzarite, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, Larry Katanzarite is appointed to the St. Joseph County Parks and Recreation Board. Next up is the St. Joe County Sewer and Water District, we've nominated Roger Naurot. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, Roger Naurot is appointed to the St. Joseph County Sewer and Water District. Next up is the St. Joseph County Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals, we have Rosemary Mandričić and Gloria Nabalski for the two seats that are on the Pita Bowell Board. Any discussion on that part of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of Rosemary Mandričić and Gloria Nabalski, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, Rosemary Mandričić and Gloria Nabalski are appointed to the St. Joseph County Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. Next up is the St. Joseph County On-Site Water Wastewater Advisory Board, and we have Tamara Harkey. Any discussion on this nomination? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, Tamara Harkey is appointed to the St. Joe County On-Site Wastewater Advisory Board. We now have the St. Joseph County Library Advisory Board where we have two nominations, Ann Rosen and Rhonda Richards. Is there any discussion on this part of the motion?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katanzarite?
Just want to say regarding Ann Rosen, I had received at least 23 emails and seven phone calls in regards to asking for her to be reappointed to the Library Board, given her background and her experience and expertise, some, I consider very important people in our community, University of Notre Dame, global engagement chairs, current school board members, township advisory board members, University of Notre Dame librarians, local business leaders, non-for-profit leaders, a rabbi, several residents, professionals from various fields, attorneys, dentists, director of the Community Foundation of St. Joe County, accountants, and retired library administrators have all recommended that we reappoint Ann Rosen to the St. Joe County Library Board. I don't know Rhonda Richards personally, I had not seen any kind of a groundswell of support for her in terms of emails or phone calls, but based on the experience and the support I have seen coming toward Ms. Rosen, I would strongly urge my colleagues to consider voting for her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzarite. Any other motion on the discussion? Ms. Hess?
I'd also like to echo Councilman Katanzarite's comments. Ann Rosen has been a respectable member of the Library Board, served well in that position since I believe 2017. She has fantastic credentials in childhood education, relevant education, she is well-respected in the community. As Councilman Katanzarite said, we have received dozens of emails and phone calls from people wanting to support her reappointment. And I know that there's some, and I don't know, again, other than a brief letter we received from Rhonda Richards, I don't know anything about her educational background, her real capacity to serve in this, in this role. She has no board experience that I can see, or, and this is a very important organi, the library is a very important community asset. So I'm concerned that we have someone in there who is, knows what she's doing and understands the library. And I know that some people think that books are doing harm to our kids, and one thing I'd like to say is that I, the few things that I think do a lot more harm, the books, to kids in our community, and that's abuse, and bullying, and discrimination, and hate, and intolerance, and ignorance, poor healthcare, and poverty, just to name a few. And so I'd like to see us spend as much energy and addressing those, and hopefully some of the kids who are reading those books at the library will help solve those problems down the road. Thank you.
Public outbursts will not be tolerated tonight. Please keep your noises and handshake, claps, and everything else to yourself. If you wish to express yourself, there will be time on certain issues, but we will not tolerate public outbursts. I believe we have the right to keep decorum of the meeting. Is there any further council discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk, I will ask you to, somebody, Mr. Morton?
Yes, I'm going to keep my comments very brief, but I've expressed this with a few other people on this board, and I think everyone up here and most people in this room know I've been on this council since, before the county city building had inside plumbing. So basically what I'm saying is I've never seen nowhere near the amount of support from the public on any board appointment since I've been on this council. It's been amazing, the support for Ann Rosen, and I just, I think that speaks volumes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Any further council discussion on the bill, on the motion? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll, rather than reiterate things that have already been said by some of my colleagues, I just want to underscore what I think is important, which is, any appointment to any board, any commission, committee that we as a council make is a reflection upon who this council is as a body and the community that it represents.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Any further council comments on this part of the motion? Hearing none, clerk, I will ask you to poll the members as to who their choice is individually for the St. Joseph County Library Advisory Board.
Okay. Mr. Thomas?
Who are we voting on, I'm sorry, first?
For Ann Rosen or Rhonda Richards?
Rhonda Richards.
Mrs. Drake?
Rhonda Richards.
Mr. Shetzel?
Rhonda Richards.
Mr. Morton?
Ann Rosen.
Mr. Fig?
Rhonda Richards.
Ms. Hess?
Ann Rosen.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Ann Rosen.
And Mr. Tanner?
Ann Rosen.
And President Root?
Rhonda Richards.
Rhonda Richards, one, two, three. Rhonda Richards is appointed five to four.
Thank you. At the record show that Rhonda Richards, by a vote of five to four, has been appointed to the St. Joseph County Library Advisory Board. That concludes our nominations and reappointments tonight. Next, we will move to a report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Report from county commissioners. Do we have any county commissioners who want to make a report? No, seeing none, we will move on to report from any council special committee. Next up are first readings. Mr. Murphy, will you please read Bill 128-24?
Bill number 128-24, Norton Cementing and Supplementing, Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as Amended for property located at 50415 Herbert Street, 50311 Alice Street, 50316 Alice Street, and 50316 Alice Street from our single-family district and OB/office buffer district to I Industrial District. Petitioners of Real Estate LLC.
Thank you. Bill number 128-24 is assigned to the Land Use and Planning Committee. That concludes our first readings tonight. Next is the resolution.
Mr. President.
John, would you please read Bill number 127-24?
After the, after this resolution?
You want to do it after this one, or you want to do it now?
I'd do it now.
All right.
I'd like to do it now. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, add two more resolutions to our meeting tonight.
We have a motion to add two resolutions to the agenda. I'll second. We have a second by Mr. Tanner. Mr. Bob Ryan, is this proper? We're fine? Okay. All right, we have a motion to add two resolutions to the agenda tonight. Any council discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of adding two resolutions to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the two resolutions will be added to the agenda. First one is Mr. Thomas?
I'm honored to be here, Bill number 129-24, Resolution Number R23-24. This resolution, the St. Joe County Council honoring member Mark Root for his service to the public, whereas the St. Joe County Council represents all citizens of St. Joseph County, Indiana periodically recognizes persons who by their dedication and hard work have distinguished themselves in our community, and whereas, Mark Root has served as the representative of District I of the St. Joseph County Council since 2005 for a total term of 20 years. And whereas Mark Root graduated with a bachelor's degree from Bethel College and a master's degree from Indiana University, go Hoosiers, has been married to his wife Sarah for 25 years and is a faculty member and librarian at Bethel University. And whereas, Mark Root has dedicated himself to improving the lives of the residents of St. Joseph County by holding elected office and contributing a great deal of talent and time to his position. And whereas, Mark Root joined the council in 2004 after winning a robust election to represent the voters of District I. And whereas, during his tenure as a councilperson, Mark Root has made many contributions to the residents of St. Joseph County by providing his expertise and dedication on many issues, including but not limited to fiscal management, health, budgeting, committee chairmanship, in the capacity as president of the St. Joseph County Council.
Whereas Mark Root has worked with investors, developers, and planners to bring quality, thoughtful projects to St. Joseph County and is respected by all. And whereas Mark Root was always looking for ways to improve on the quality of St. Joseph County. And whereas during Mark Root's tenure, he has made a huge impact on the current state and future of St. Joseph County, his knowledge, skills, and dedication will be missed, and we will feel the loss upon his departure from the council. Now therefore be it resolved by the St. Joseph County Council that, on behalf of the citizens of St. Joseph County, Indiana and the St. Joseph County Council, we proudly and publicly recognize Mark Root for his long-lasting impact on the prosperity, health, and safety of St. Joseph County, Indiana, and extend our appreciation and thanks to him for his years of service to the citizens of St. Joseph County. We will be forever indebted for his dedication and service.
Thank you.
Do you have any words, Mark? If you can get them out?
I'm not sure I recognize the guy you're talking about, but, no, it's been my honor to serve my constituents in District I for the last 20 years. I am thankful for their support through five terms, and it has been one of the great honors of my life to have represented them here in this body. I want to thank my family. When you sign up for this job, they tell you it's only two nights a month. Yeah, you're all laughing, you've all learned how that works, right? And so to my family who has missed me for many dinners, Little League games, school programs, I thank you for sharing me with the community during those times. To my colleagues up here and to the many that I have served with, probably too many to name all of you, it has always been my joy to work with you. I've tried to work with both Democrat and Republicans over the years, consider, consider you my friends on both sides of the aisle. I know we're going to probably then honor another long-term member who's been my friend for a long time, proud to call him that. And again, I just thank the people of District I for putting their trust in me for the last two decades. So we have a motion on the table, or, sorry, we need to put a motion on the table. Is there a motion to pass?
Motion to pass.
Second. Motion to pass was made by Mr. Thomas, was seconded by Mr. Katanzarite. Is there any further council discussion on this motion?
I, I, Mr. Root, or go ahead, Mr. Katanzarite.
Second was made by Mr. Tanner.
Oh, by Mr. Tanner. Thank you.
I would have made it, but he made it.
Thank you. Second made by Mr. Tanner. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none?
Me.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Thomas.
I just want to say on a personal note, I've been thrilled to work with everybody, but I've really been thrilled to work with you, Mark. And I consider myself, self-syllin' newbie, and I can't tell you, it's from my heart how much I appreciate you and what you've done for our community. And I know it's hard for you, I know it's hard for your family, when you do something for 20 years, it's a big part of your life. And I just want you to know how much I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
I like to say something.
Mr. Fig?
Yes, Mr. Root? I was caucused in about two and a half years ago, and my first meeting was a committee meeting, and we met up here then. I remember sitting down in the front row, I could not bring my, I could hear this seat right here, I could not bring myself to come sit up here because I didn't think I was worthy. And he came out and said, "Get up there and sit down." And I did. And I appreciate that, and all the friendship the last couple of years. And you're not going away because I still have your phone number, so you better not change it.
Thank you, Mr. Fig. Any further council discussion on the motion? Ms. Hess?
I would just like to say, Mark, that I've been serving on the council with you since 2013, and I appreciated the collegial relationship that we had over those years, and you will be missed on the council.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Oh.
I'd be remiss if I didn't.
Yeah, and I got to say.
Echo some of these comments.
I don't want to start with names, but the very first person to call me when I got elected was Councilman Katanzarite, and I have never forgotten his generosity to me as the first person to reach out to me and say, "Hey, welcome to the, welcome to the council."
Going to be tough shoes to fill, Mark, as you leave the council. As you know, we had, one time had three of us that were named Mark on the council, we all got nicknames, Mark One, because of my tenure being the most, and then you were Mark Two, and Judge Tulloyden was Mark Three, but you will certainly be missed. It's been great working with you, it's been work, great working across the aisle with you on many issues, and you've been a great and fantastic colleague and a good leader these past couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzarite.
One last one, if I may.
Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. Root. Our tenure together has been on the shorter side of things, but I want to appreciate the congeniality that you've expressed to me, some of the honesty that we've gotten to share with each other, and the opportunity to break bread at Coney Express on the occasion to discuss the matters that we have on the council from our personal perspectives that I think allowed both of us to serve better. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion, let's vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I had to think about it.
I know you did. The ayes have it, the motion is approved. Thank you to everyone for that. And I believe we have another resolution. Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, Joe. Good job. Thanks.
Mr. President, members of the council, members of the community, I know to the public this may seem really ceremonial, but it's not too often that we have two significant members of our council that have such tenure, who've been here a long time that are leaving, such as Mr. Root and Mr. Morton. So if you don't mind, I would like to proceed with Bill number 13024, Resolution 2424, Resolution of the St. Joseph County Council recognizing the distinguished Raphael Morton, county council member representing District G of St. Joseph County, Indiana. Whereas from time to time, the St. Joseph County Council recognizes certain members of our community who have distinguished themselves by making a significant impact on our county, and by doing so, these individuals stand tall in their many contributions to our citizens. One such person who we are recognizing this evening is the outgoing county council member, Raphael Morton, who represented District D for over 32 years. With the unfortunate and untimely death of Mr. Morton's predecessor, Mr. Odell Duke Newbern, Sr., in January of 1992, Mr. Morton was encouraged to fill the vacancy by then Mayor of South Bend and later to become governor, the late Joseph E. Kernan and his wife Maggie, as well as several members of the West Side community. Shortly after Mr. Newbern's death, the St. Joseph County Democratic Precinct Committee Members Organization from District D voted to have Mr. Morton fill out the remainder, the remaining 11 months of Mr. Newbern's term that same year. Mr. Morton decided in the spring to run for the open seat and went on to win the primary and general election that year, as he has continued to do for eight terms, eight four-year terms in the county council, often winning by large margins and even sometimes being unopposed. Whereas Raphael Morton is the son of Ralph Morton and the late Ruth Morton, and was raised in South Bend with the help of his Uncle Jack and Aunt Mary Reed. He is the proud father of Quentin Barber. Mr. Morton is also a son of South Bend, he attended Saint Stans for elementary school and went on to graduate from LaSalle High School. From there, he went on to graduate from Indiana University's distinguished Kelly School of Business. Mr. Morton's successful professional career has spanned decades in advertising, marketing, sales with WSBT, Schur's Communications, and Sinclair Broadcasting. Whereas Raphael Morton has made many contributions to our community through his membership with Rotary Club of South Bend, most notably through his efforts every year to help feed the poor during the holidays, something he was taught by his mother, his late mother Ruth, when they would go to the south side of Chicago and help feed people that were struggling at times. Besides championing the rights and needs of the disadvantaged, Mr. Morton has taken on the issue of lead in some of the most impacted neighborhoods in his district and ensured that expertise and funds were made available to tackle this all-important issue plaguing families and children. And whereas Raphael Morton has been committed to a lifetime of public service in our community for over 32 years and has helped to advance many causes and issues while on the St. Joseph County Council, a few which were most impactful include the bonding and construction of the Juvenile Justice Center, the passing of legislation which helped establish the long-avoided optional income tax. He helped pass the groundwater protection ordinance, he helped with the bonding and construction of the St. Joseph County Jail, he helped pass the smoking ban in public places, public spaces ordinance, he helped pass at least two animal, animal control ordinances that I know of. He was also part of the county wheel surtax, known as the Wheel Tax Center County. He worked to join all the county's 911 centers into one consolidated St. Joe County Public Safety Answering Point, PSAP. He helped pass the human rights ordinance, the tax abatement ordinance, he helped pass the age 55 and older property tax cap. He voted to reorganize the Public Defender Program in our county, which has helped us secure over $13.6 million in reimbursement from the state of Indiana since the program's inception in 2007. And he's, he has served on the boards of the South Bend Housing Authority, the Community Corrections Advisory Council, the Youth Service Bureau, and the South Bend International Airport Advisory Council. And whereas Raphael Morton has served in various leadership capacities on the St. Joe County Council, none was more impactful than when he was our longtime president, leading us through many challenges like the recession of 2009, the property tax cap and circuit-breaker fiscal cliff, the COVID-19 pandemic, the rezoning of properties which were oftentimes controversial like the AM General Humvee plant expansion, the New Carlyle IEC expansion, which paved the way for the now GM Samsung SDI battery plant and the Amazon Web Services which paved the way for the now GM Samsung SDI battery plant and the Amazon Web Services data centers. All the while, he led with conviction and passion, often trying to unite counselors from both parties in making decisions which provided the most benefit to citizens, county employees, and department heads. His mastery of transparency and compassion on controversial issues often led him to being criticized by some council members for allowing the public to speak beyond their allotted three-minute limit. Meetings often went past midnight on some of those controversial issues. Whereas tonight, we celebrate the many achievements of Raphael Morton while serving on the St. Joe County Council for over 32 years. We can be assured that our work with him has not ended, but will only continue as he moves on to be one of our county commissioners. There will no longer be the dapper attire of Raphael Morton to compete with among our council members, not that we ever competed with him, as he was always dressed impeccably representing his constituents. We do wish him much success in the office of the St. Joe County Commissioners and look forward to his continued leadership in his new role. And now therefore be it resolved by the St. Joseph County Council that on behalf of the citizens of St. Joseph County, the St. Joseph County Council wishes to extend its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Councilmember Raphael Morton for his over 32 years of service to the public while representing District D. I forgot Section 2. Section 2 was, "The St. Joe County Council wishes to acknowledge Councilmember Raphael Morton's innumerable contributions to our county and take note that he has held his council seat, as far as we can tell in the history books, longer than any previous member on this body."
To say I'm overwhelmed would be a major understatement. To say, you always hear, "It's been an honor and a privilege," and I know that's very cliche, but for me, that's from the bottom of my heart. It really has and will continue to be an honor and a privilege to serve each and every citizen of this fine county. And I just want to thank everyone up here, as my colleagues and all my past colleagues, and just want to say that I wouldn't be here, none of this would be possible if it weren't for my Uncle Jack Reed, my mom Ruth Morton, my aunt Dela Ames, and my dad Ralph Morton, and my aunt Mary Reed, Jack's wife. Thank you for all your support and all the issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. May we have a motion on the resolution?
Member approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Ms. Hess, seconded by Mr. Thomas. Is there any further council discussion on the motion?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katanzright.
I don't know if we normally have a public hearing on resolutions, but is it possible to have a public hearing?
If you would so like, yes, we can do that. We can open up to a public hearing on...
Because I think there might be some people here that may be against this ordinance. I'd like to see them if they're here.
We can do that with no objections from the council? No objections? Okay. We will open to, is this 130-24, Mark? 130-24?
130-24. Bill Number 130-24.
We will open to a public hearing on Bill Number 130-24. Those wishing to speak in favor, please come to the podium, sign in, and you'll have three minutes to address the council.
George San, I mean, Michael Gotch, Citizen Gotch, South Bend, Indiana. After 32 years on the council, we're not here to praise Caesar, but to bury him. We've conducted extensive and intensive opposition research on Raphael Morton, and we've come up with the following. First, we didn't realize he was only 16 years of age when he was appointed to the council. Secondly, he's kind and friendly to everyone that he meets. He's diligent and hardworking. His dapper clothes are only exceeded by his flashy smile. And as he moves from the council to the board, he'll bring common sense, discerning judgment, and uncommon collegiality to his new colleagues. And while he may not have been able to outshine his Uncle Jack, he has followed his example in every way, and I'm certain that Jack is smiling down on him tonight. We wish him all the best in his new role and recognize the incredible and indelible positive impact that he has had in our community for the past 32 years. And I would be remiss if I did not also make a comment about the earlier resolution, Mr. Root. Mr. Root and I actually began around the same time. I was elected in 2004, he was elected in 2005, and it was through his bipartisan efforts that so many good things happened in the county. And so I really do appreciate having served as the Circuit Judge here for many years and now in the federal capacity. In full disclosure, they've recalled me, you know, they wouldn't let me get away, so they made me come back and work. But anyways, I don't want to digress too far. But anyways, I just want to say to Mr. Root, I really appreciate everything you did, and we have a wonderful council because of the type of hard work that both the two of you have displayed for 32 and 20 years respectively. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Judge Gotch.
Thanks, Judge. Need your glasses, Mark. Good evening, Jim Bogner, 807 West Washington Street, South Bend, Indiana 46601. Since there wasn't an opportunity, I would like to first begin by thanking Mark Root for his contributions to this council. You have always been kind to me when I have been here. You have been a true public servant, and I appreciate your efforts in this community. You've made it a better place. I come to this council to stand in support of a resolution honoring Raphael Morton. The resolution is an excellent review of Councilman Morton's service to the community. Over the years, when I've had the occasion to address this council, I've attempted to focus my discussion on data-driven information based on numbers. I also am a student of history, focusing on the belief that if we know how an issue started, it might assist in helping get proper perspective on moving forward. When this current council term ends on December 31st, here are some interesting numbers. 12,014 days, or 32 years, 10 months, 22 days, or 394 months, 22 days, or 288,336 hours, over a quarter of a million hours. Amazing numbers that represent Councilman Morton's continuous service on this county council since February 10th, 1992. What is even more surprising is the way it started. In January of 1992, Odell Duke Newbern, then President Pro Tem of this council, suddenly passed away. Within hours of his death, the South Bend Tribune published an editorial simply entitled "Duke." In it, they wrote, quote, "He really cared." Those three words better than any others describe Odell Duke Newbern, the St. Joe County Councilman who died Thursday. While serving as President of Local 5 of the United Auto Workers, Mr. Newbern was known as a labor leader who really cared about workers. He didn't attain leadership just for the sake of ego or to play games in union politics or with management. He was there for the workers. Later in the editorial, it concluded with the following observations, quote, "In politics, on the South Bend City Council, and later as County Councilman Duke showed that he really cared about his city and his county." He died Thursday in Memorial Hospital after a stroke. He was 73. He will be missed not only by friends and relatives, but by an entire community about which he really cared. A few weeks later, one of Duke Newbern's daughters published a short opinion piece in the comments section of the Tribune, in it he thanked the community for their support and told a short story about her father. She ended with the following quote, "I don't know who will sit in my father's seat, but I do know that he or she must do the job well." These were the shoes a 34-year-old political novice stepped into. A person can have the support of the political establishment, funding to run a solid campaign, and be elected, but can that person govern? Can they legislate? Can they help form consensus on a regular basis? The resolution from Mr. Katanzright clearly answers those questions. The body of work has influenced all parts of county government, and we are fortunate that Councilman Morton has chose to continue to serve as Commissioner starting in January. His experience and knowledge are valued assets to our community. As Raphael Morton's time on this council comes to an end, I believe it is proper to revisit the last statement of Duke Newbern's daughter. "I don't know who will sit in my father's seat, but I do know that he or she must do the job well. Councilman Morton, my friend, you did not just do the job well, you have done it exceptionally well. And tonight, somewhere in a far better place, I'm certain Duke Newbern is smiling in agreement. I thank the council for the privilege of your time. I wish you all a joyous holiday season and a happy and healthy new year. Good evening."
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the resolution?
Someone online.
Okay. Anybody else in the room wishes to speak in favor of the resolution? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of the resolution? Can't quite see the name. Is it Quentin? Yeah, go ahead.
Can you guys hear me? Yeah, I'm calling in from Oakland, California, just to say, you know, thank you all for, you know, recognizing my dad. First, thank Councilman Mark Root for your service, and I acknowledge your 20, over 20 years of service, and, you know, you're serving a fine county, and it was cool to hear everything that everyone said about you. And also, it means so much to me to hear everything that you guys said about my dad. I definitely know that he really cares about St. Joe County, and he made me care about St. Joe County. I mean, Uncle Jack made me care about St. Joe County when he was alive as well. No matter where I travel in the world, and when I talk to my dad, I can always hear about what's going on in St. Joe County. And, you know, sometimes it's rough, sometimes it's great, and, you know, throughout all of our conversations, he's always told the truth. He's been authentic, and I know he cares about the people. So it's really good to hear other people confirm that and affirm that. And again, just thank you guys and congratulations, Dad, and looking forward to what you're going to do in your new role as county commissioner. Thanks, guys. Congratulations, Dad.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this motion? Going once, Mr. Thomas.
I have really enjoyed, obviously you, Mark, and I've really enjoyed Raphael. I can't tell you, he has a great smile. This is more than half, well, should I say more than half your life? Are you that old? You always told me you were in office since Lincoln. Is that true? Pretty much. But I can't tell you, cajoling back and forth, disagreeing, but still getting along, and you are a true gentleman. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate that, being a gentleman. We can disagree, but you can still be a gentleman, and I know I'm going to see you in this building, but I just want you to know how much I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Thomas? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
We're taking our...
Not yet, we'll come to ours in a minute. Anyone else from the public wishes to speak in favor? If not, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed? No, I mean, genuinely, if anyone wants to speak in opposition, that would be the time to stand up, but if not, we will close the public hearing on Bill Number 130-24. And we will entertain a, do we have a motion? Yes, we do. It was Councilman, what, Hess and, or I'm sorry, Councilwoman Hess and Councilman Thomas. So we are ready for discussion on the motion from the council. Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Morton, you're not going too far. I mean, we're on the fourth floor now. It'll just be a few floors above that we'll be interacting with you moving forward, but don't let that distance make you a stranger.
It definitely won't.
We've definitely benefited from not just your presence, but your candor. We always know exactly how Raphael feels, but the way Raphael feels is a direct representation of those he serves. And I think we could all only ask so much of anybody who represents us at any level of government. And greatly respect you. Take a lot of notes from you over the last couple of years, and we'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Ms. Hess.
Yes. Mr. Morton, I would like to thank you very much for taking me under your wing when I came, was caucused in in 2013, for being an excellent mentor to me and showing me the ropes. I'll always have fond memories of our raucous caucuses. And it was interesting to find out, just within the last couple of years, that we're birthday twins, although I must confess, I'm slightly older than Mr. Morton. But, so, and we, as Brian said, we know where to find you, so don't be surprised if we're popping up there once in a while to have a conversation.
Please do.
Mr. Fig?
Mr. Morton, I first met you when you came on the Siloways Management District Board. I appreciate your faithfulness all those years, and I also appreciate you stepping down so I could go on that board. I really do appreciate that. When I was caucused in, and I can remember one of our first meetings, or maybe you took me, and you emphasized all nine of us were one of nine. You kept saying that, one of nine, and that really meant a lot to me, that I was one of nine. And thank you for that, and also I'm happy you're going to be up in the commissioners and this year with the budget. When you come in with your budget, the answer is no.
Any further council discussion on the motion? Katanzright?
Mr. Morton, I have to echo Councilwoman Hess and other people's comments that, thank you for, you know, I came, I guess I get to take over your spot, and I was the most tenured member on the council. I came along four years and 11 months after you, but you took me under your wing, and we used to sit on that side of the dais together, and you really guided me as a novice rookie council member and showed me the ropes, so to say, but I appreciate all you've done for me and teaching me a lot of skills that I utilize today. And sorely, we'll be sorely missing you in terms of legislating with you and working with you, but it's comforting knowing that you will be just a short distance away and be a leader in our county and the executive branch, and we appreciate that and all you've done and the many contributions you've made. May you have continued health and good blessings in the remainder of your life.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you very much.
Any further council discussion? Mr. Morton, let me just say, we've been here a long time together, my man, and your example of dedication to public service has been above and beyond the example that all public servants should follow. The way you have handled your office and the way that you've helped constituents over the years, I just stand back sometimes and amazed at the job you have done representing this community as a St. Joseph County Councilman. And even going beyond that, though, even though we were on opposite sides of the aisle and opposite sides of some issues over the time, over those 20 years I've been here, we've always been friends. And could always put the battles aside and talk to each other, call each other. I think we even had lunch a few times together, just to sometimes do the work of the council and sometimes just have lunch. And you really have been a true dedicated public servant, and I think this county thanks you for your service. Thank you. With that, all in favor of approving Resolution 130-24, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution 130-24 is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Morton.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Root. The St. Joe County Council, thank you for having us here on behalf of the South Bend Common Council. A special proclamation, whereas Raphael Morton is a proud graduate of LaSalle High School in South Bend, Indiana, and earned a Bachelor of Science in Marketing and Advertising from Indiana University Bloomington School of Business, and whereas he currently serves as a Senior Marketing and Sales Consultant at WSPT-TV, demonstrating expertise and leadership in marketing and sales, and whereas he has shown exceptional dedication to public service as the President of the St. Joseph County Council and previously served as Chairman of the Budget and Administration Committee and the Criminal Justice Human Services Committee, and whereas his commitment to the community is evident through his roles as a Board Member of the St. Joseph County Community Corrections, Rail Services, and the Early Intervention Advisory Board, and as a member of the St. Joseph County Airport Authority, and whereas he has contributed actively to the South Bend Downtown Rotary Club, and has previously served on the boards of the YMCA of Michiana, Downtown South Bend Incorporated, and CASA, the Court Appointed Special Advocate for the Juvenile Justice Center. the Court Appointed Special Advocate for the Juvenile Justice Center, and whereas Raphael Morton's leadership extends to serving as the former Chair of the Board of Commissioners for the South Bend Housing Authority, and as Vice President Tempore for, I'm sorry, of the St. Joe County Council. Whereas through a lifetime of professional excellence and dedicated service to the community, he has made significant contributions to the betterment of South Bend and St. Joseph County, inspiring others through his leadership and advocacy. Proclaim this 10th day of December 2024 in the City of South Bend, the County of St. Joseph, and the State of Indiana, and this is signed by the South Bend Common Council members. Thank you for your service to the community, Mr. Morton.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, as the President of the Common Council and Vice President Sheila Niskoski. We really appreciate your commitment and dedication that you have served all these years for the county, and also to you, Mr. Root, for your service that you have contributed to and the firsthand experience that I've had to work with you also. So congratulations to you both. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Now we are ready for Bill Number 127-24. Mr. Murphy, will you please read the resolution?
Bill Number 127-4, 24, Resolution of the St. Joseph County Council Adopting and Approving St. Joseph County Financial Policies, Petitioner, Auditor. I think everyone has a copy of it. If you don't mind, I'll just speak from the chair here. Why, why have financial policies? I mean, number one, it's a good idea. It's a best practice. We have policies, but they're not always written down, and they're in disparate, different places, so we tried to consolidate some of these. I worked with a member of our office, Katie Bishop. We got some information from other counties and cities, some best practices, but the majority of the policies are actually specific to Indiana. Indiana has a lot of unique rules, the DLGF, State Board of Accounts, Gateway, those are all kind of unique to Indiana, so our policies reflect all the different things that we have to, all the different reports and things that we have to do to stay compliant. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding the policies.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Hearing none, may I entertain a motion on Bill 127-24?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve was made by Mr. Schatzel, seconded by Mr. Morton. Any further council discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, please state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Bill Number 127-24 is approved. That concludes our resolutions for tonight. Next up is a salary amendment. Mr. Murphy?
Bill Number 126-24, An Ordnance Amending Ordinance 107-23, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2024, petitioner, commissioners.
Committee report, please.
Bill Number 126-24 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
I am not the petitioner, but I'll speak on behalf of the Commissioner, Steve Dalton, Financial Advisor to the county. This item, if you'll recall, when we talked about it at the committee, the commissioners hired some part-time labor at Portage Manor during the auction and debris cleanout phase. They have asked you to make a transfer from their promotion line item to the part-time labor line items that are appropriate for paying those salaries, those part-time payments.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll move to public hearing on Bill Number 126-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? The public hearing on Bill Number 126-24 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve was made by Mr. Figg, seconded by Mr. Tanner. Any further council discussion on 126-24?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Tendrick?
I will say, by my voting for this tonight, to pay the part-time employees that helped clear out Portage Manor, there's no indication that I was in support of the closure of Portage Manor, but I will be supporting the measure just to make sure we pay people that did the work, but it is, by no way a signer of my support for the closure of Portage Manor and how it was handled.
Thank you. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schatzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Figg?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tendrick?
Yes, for the payment.
For payment, okay. Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let's record show that Bill Number 126-24 was approved by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes our salary amendments for tonight. Next up is a public hearing, public comment on fiscal matters. All fiscal matters were heard at our November 2024 committee meeting and discussed by the council at that time, so we will move right into the amendment and the public hearing. Is there an amendment?
Mark, do you want me to read it?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I always forget to have you read this one. Mr. Murphy?
Bill Number 124, 125-24, An Ordnance Appropriating and Transferring Monies for the Purpose Here and Specified for the Several Departments Here Enlisted of St. Joseph County Government.
Bill needs to be amended. Is there an amendment? Motion for an amendment.
Mr. Root?
Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to amend Item Q to include interest in leases in the amounts of $982.59 and $393,656.16 respectively, as well as amend the Building and Structures Line Item under 8950-42010040, down to $105,361.25 for a budget-neutral amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to amend made by Mr. Tanner, seconded by Mr. Morton. Any council discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. The amendment is passed and now becomes part of the public hearing on the bill. We will now move to a public hearing on Bill Number 125-24. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any part of Bill 125-24? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor of 125-24? Seeing no one, we will move to those who wish to speak in opposition. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition in the room, please come forward. Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Public hearing on Bill Number 125-24 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
For approval.
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilman Figg. Any further council discussion on the bill?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Tendrick?
As I said, the previous bill on Item Q, my voting to support this bill, even though it's got several expenditures for the closure and security of Portage Manor, is no way a show of support for the process or the closure of the facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Schatzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Figg?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let's record show that Bill Number 125-24 was passed by a vote of nine zero. That concludes our public hearing, public comment on fiscal matters for tonight. Next up will be miscellaneous matters. Mr. Murphy, can you read our first bill, please, there?
Bill Number 118-24, An Ordnance Amending and Supplementing an Appendix Schedule of Fines and Fees for the St. Joseph County Department of Health, petitioner, St. Joseph County Department of Health.
Committee report, please.
Bill Number 118-24 comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Michelle McGlory. I'm the Chief Health Officer for St. Joseph County. I'm here to clarify questions that arose during the presentation originally from this particular request. The requests that we have made, made, the requests that we have made are primarily from mandates of the state. We can no longer charge a property transfer on our septic systems. We are mandated by the state to charge no more than a certain fee for temporary permits and for mobile food permits. Those all are being reduced in value. We have several immunizations that we need to reduce the fees that are being charged for those. We don't want to overcharge. Right now, we, our policy is to charge 106% of the actual cost of the vaccinations that are administered, so we are not trying to make any money or raise the fees on those. That is just covering our costs of refrigeration of the vaccines, the needles, the syringes, the Band-Aids, the alcohol swabs. Those are just meeting costs. In terms of our fees in the vital records for birth records and death certificates, we're raising those similar to counties elsewhere in Indiana that are similar to our size so that we will be on par with them, but all of our costs have gone up. We are only meeting our costs in terms of the printers, the specialized paper that you have to have the death certificates and birth certificates on, and we have not raised any of our fees and vital records since 2019. We inquired with the state after the last meeting if we could use HFI funding to meet the difference in our cost and what we were charging, and they notified us that we are not allowed to pay ourselves for that. We are only trying to meet our costs. We are very sensitive about the, these products potentially being prohibitive for some of our citizens, and we do have a program that if people are not able to come up with that money, we do work with people. So we do not want to be, these documents which are very life-altering for families, we do not want to impose any extra burden on our community whatsoever. We're just trying to meet costs, so that's why we're asking for the fee changes. But many of the immunization costs will go down.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner?
Mr. Root?
Well, Ms. Drake?
I just want to say thank you for coming and explaining and for talking to me earlier this week and explaining the reasons, because I know that I was one of the people that questioned you, so I appreciate you taking the time to explain better, so I understand.
We appreciate anyone taking the time to speak to us. Our doors are always open. If there are any things that we can better answer or give you information about, that's our job, and we want to do a good job, so please feel free to always contact us if there's questions. The same goes for our community members, too. That's what we're here to do. We're here to take care of our community.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, we will move to public hearing on Bill Number 118-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone online? The public hearing on Bill Number 118-24 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill?
So moved.
Motion to approve was made by Mr. Morton, seconded by Ms. Hess. Any further council discussion on the bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Figg?
Yes.
Ms. Hess? Mr. Tendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Schatzel?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let's record show that Bill Number 118-24 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Let me just give a brief explanation on the next two bills. These bills are a little out of the ordinary for the council in that the council will hear the petitioner, and we will hold a public hearing on these votes. But these two particular votes require two months of public hearing, and so while the public hearing will be tonight, if I'm correct, the vote for these two will actually occur at the January meeting. So with that said, Mr. Murphy, will you please read Bill Number 121-24?
Bill Number 121-24, An Ordnance of the St. Joseph County Council Authorizing Issuance of General Obligation Bonds of the County for the purpose, providing funds to pay the cost of certain capital expenditures of the county and incidental expenses in connection with and to pay the cost of issuance of the bonds. Petitioner, commissioners.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Finello, an attorney with Dinsmore &amp; Shoal, 211 North Pennsylvania Street, Indianapolis, Indiana, serving as bond counsel with respect to this bond ordinance for the county commissioners. The bond ordinance is payable from property taxes in an amount not to exceed 7.4 million for the Alexander Road County Highway Garage Project. As you mentioned, there is also a companion appropriation ordinance providing for the appropriation of bond proceeds, and as accurately stated by Councilman Root, there are two separate public hearings required for the bond ordinance. The first one has been advertised for this evening, and the second one has been advertised for January 14th. The bond ordinance may not be adopted until after that second public hearing, and the appropriation ordinance would be appropriately adopted after that bond ordinance adoption. Pursuant to Indiana Code Title VI, Article 1.1, Chapter 20, Section 3.1, certain information is required to be provided to the public tonight because this bond ordinance is subject to the petitioner remonstrance procedures because the project is considered a controlled project due to the amount of 7.4 million. Mr. O'Brien is county council attorney, has copies of the handout, if anyone in the public would like to review that. I will try to go through this very quickly and summarize what those 11 requirements are. The first one is the result of St. Joseph County's current and projected annual debt service payments divided by the net assessed value of taxable property within the county, which is approximately 0.0164%. And before I continue, just let me explain that Mr. Steve Dalton has provided all of the financial information to insert in this handout, and also, all of this information is incorporated in the bond ordinance. Number two, the result of the sum of the county's outstanding long-term debt plus the outstanding long-term debt of other taxing units that include any of the territory of the county divided by the net assessed value of taxable property in the county, which is approximately 3.23%. The maximum terms, term of the bonds is seven years. Maximum principal amount is not to exceed 7.4 million. The estimated interest rate on the bonds is between 4.5% and 5.5%. Of course, those are estimates which could be higher or lower depending what happens at the competitive sale of the bonds, and it is a competitive, will be a competitive sale. The estimated total interest cost for the bonds, which is $1,839,750. A description of the project to be financed with bond proceeds includes all or any portion of the following: the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of a vehicle storage building to serve as a satellite highway garage for the St. Joseph County Highway Department to be located at or near the end of Alexander Road in St. Joseph County, including but not limited to the acquisition of land for parking and equipment, storage, access road improvements, Alexander Road reconstruction, prep bay with wash equipment, site development such as site clearing, site restoration, and landscaping, earthwork, utilities, site lighting, fire protection wells, asphalt pavement, and necessary engineering design and related activities. The following statement is also provided to the public: if the St. Joseph County Council adopts an ordinance making a preliminary determination to issuance, to issue the bonds following the second public hearing on January 14th, 2025, notice of such preliminary determination will be published, and any owners of property within St. Joseph County or registered voters residing within St. Joseph County will have 30 days following the publication to file a petition that complies with subdivisions four and five of Title VI, Article 1.1, Chapter 20, Section 3.1b, requesting the application of the petitioner remonstrance process for the proposed bonds. The county's current debt service levy is $2,704,359, and the current debt service rate is .0217 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. The estimated increase to St. Joseph County's debt service levy and rate that will result if the bonds were to be issued is $0.00 per $100 of assessed valuation, respectively. There is There is no increase in debt service into future years because the county's 2022 GO bonds that were issued for another highway garage project are retiring and that payment is greater than the payment proposed for these bonds. And, I'm sure Steve, excuse me, could answer any questions with respect to that. The final item required to be noted is the estimated amount of the county's debt service levy and rate that will result during the following 10 years if the county issues the bonds after also considering any changes that will occur to the debt service levy and rate during that period on account of any outstanding bonds or lease obligations that will mature or terminate during that 10-year period. A chart has been provided in the handout and is also listed in the bond ordinance. I will not read through the entire 10 years there. But, if anyone has any additional questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll open to public hearing on Bill Number 121-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill Number 121-24 is now closed. And, that will conclude our action on Bill 121-24 for this evening. Next up is Bill Number 122-24. Mr. Murphy?
Bill Number 122-24. An ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council appropriating proceeds of general obligation bonds. Petitioner, commissioners.
Counsel, this is the companion bill to the original bond ordinance that you just had a public hearing on. This appropriates those dollars if and when you adopt this, the bond ordinance in January, then you would have to give the commissioners and the IPG department the right to spend those dollars, those 7.4 million dollars. This is the appropriation to allow that. Could you please also offer a public hearing for this as well?
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we will move to public hearing on Bill Number 122-24. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this? Anyone online? Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Online? The public hearing on Bill Number 122-24 is now closed. It concludes our actions on this bill for this evening. And, that concludes our miscellaneous matters for tonight. Next up will be land use and planning matters. Mr. Murphy, will you please read Bill Number 98-24?
Bill Number 98-24. Ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 15 Planning and Zoning of the St. Joseph County Code as amended for property located at unaddressed 40 plus or minus acres at the southeast corner of State Road 2 and Strawberry Road, west of and abutting 30294 State Road 2 from A Agricultural District to C Commercial District. Petitioner, SR2 Echo Dev LLC.
Committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Bill Number 98-24 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner, or, sorry, area plan?
Yeah, this is Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission staff with offices on the 11th floor of this building. This is a petition to rezone 40 acres at the southwest corner of Strawberry Road and State Road 2 from A Agricultural District to C Commercial. This rezoning comes to you from the Area Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation subject to two written commitments. The first being that commercial development is prohibited prior to the new interchange at that intersection being finalized. The second being, commercial development is prohibited until sewer and water services are available at this site. You can see the site outlined there in red. It is immediately to the east of the IEC core development area. And, it's been farmed in the past, obviously. This is the site looking east along State Road 2 and then looking east from Strawberry. Per the site plan provided by the petitioner, it shows a fast food use in the, immediately at the intersection. And, then further to the east is the travel center use and then to the south would be a hotel use. Obviously, where these uses fall is going to depend heavily on how much right-of-way is going to be taken through the design of the new interchange, as well as the fact that it probably isn't feasible to allow or to provide all of these uses without sewer service. And, it might even be challenging to provide one of these more intensive commercial uses without that connection to sewer. Since there was a lot of discussion related to the proposed intersection at the, at the committee hearing and furthermore, since a written commitment is based on this that you're currently considering, this was the latest design provided to me. This concept has not been finalized. However, it would seem that access to this property, though it hasn't really been pinpointed where this is going to be, it would have to be from a road which provides access to that roundabout that you see at Strawberry just south of the new interchange. So, this would really be the only available access to the property in the future once the interchange is in place. It does seem that a memorandum of understanding between the county and Indot will likely be concluded by the end of the first quarter of 2025. And, this MOA would include, it would finalize the funding, the design, and construction of this interchange. So, again, this is just a concept currently. Turning to the conversation on utilities, utilities that being sewer from South Bend and water from the town of New Carlisle, those will be available to the AWS site immediately across Strawberry by the, by May of 2025, provided that all goes as planned. From that point, IPG would work to help coordinate further extension of those utilities to potential users in the area, including potentially on the east side of Strawberry Road where the petitioner's property is located. Again, the Area Plan Commission did find that it met the five criteria in state law and therefore did deliver a favorable recommendation for this rezoning. However, once again, that was conditioned on those two written commitments. The first being that commercial development is prohibited until the interchange design is finalized and the second being that it's prohibited until sewer and water service become available on site. It was found that the most desirable use for this property in the future, given its proximity to the IEC core development area, would be commercial uses which provide goods and services to serve the employees in the industrial industries in that area. However, if this development were to be on septic, it would lead to a less efficient use of the property, which couldn't necessarily be considered as responsible development growth. And, turning to the interchange itself, it'll be really difficult to properly design this site until that access is sort of developed through that final design. So, that does come to you, six one, favorable with those written commitments. There were four residents that spoke in remonstrance at the Area Plan Commission. Their concerns range from just not wanting to see additional development in this area to concerns related to the aquifer and just generally the number of unknowns that there are concerning the future interchange and whether, whether and when utilities will be available and how that could dictate future development. There was a lot of discussion, again, at committee in terms of potentially approving this with an alternative or modified written commitment. Specifically, the petitioner was proposing a written commitment stating that the property would connect to utilities when they become available. This would be authorized for you to do in state law. However, in that case, since the written commitment that you would be imposing through the approval would actually be less stringent than what the Area Plan Commission conditioned their approval on, it would have to be sent back to the Area Plan Commission to ratify that written commitment. This would have to happen within 45 days. So, we would put that on the agenda for the January Area Plan Commission meeting. At that point, the Area Plan Commission could approve the modified written commitment or they could issue a recommendation to you as far as the recommendation goes and it would go back for your consideration. Beyond that, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the council for area plan? Mr. Thomas?
Number six, Sean, can you talk about that a little more? Make that a little clearer for me, can you? The time of rezoning proposals being considered by the legislative body, that little paragraph, can you?
Yeah, of course, of course. So, that's kind of referring to where we are now in the process. You would be the legislative body who's approving the rezoning. If you wanted to go with the written commitments that came from the Area Plan Commission, you could just approve it tonight and that would finalize it. If you wanted to opt for a written commitment or commitments that were less stringent than what came to you from the APC, then it would have to go back to the APC and they would have to ratify that written commitment essentially. And, that would finalize the process if they ratified it.
So, if we wanted to add more written commitments, would we go back to APC?
If they're considered less stringent. But, if you were to add written commitments that were more restrictive, you could do that on your own without going back to APC.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council for area plan?
Good evening. George Lepignyoda's attorney, Krieg DeValle, offices at 4101 Edison Lakes Parkway in Mishawaka, here on behalf of the petitioner. I won't try to say the LLC name, but Echo Development. I believe that much discussion was had with my partner, Stephen Studer, on this topic and on this proposed petition, rezoning petition at the committee. And, the objections that the petitioner has to the two written commitments were explained. But, I do want to take a couple of moments to explain them again. They mainly, they don't deal with avoiding the connection or not cooperating with the design of the new road. They simply deal with limiting options for this developer. Developing a 40-acre parcel, especially in an area like this, can be an expensive process. There are interest costs, time is, of course, money. And, having the petitioner not be able to do anything with the site until the road design is finalized with a state agency that is oftentimes not the most forthcoming, if any of you have dealt with Indot. Or, to wait for utilities to service the site would be a disadvantage to the developer and to the development. And, it would hit them financially significantly. Of course, the concern here is that the neighbors that were already approved did not have such written commitments. Neither AWS or GM were given such commitments that they needed to wait for these improvements. In fact, they are the impetus for these improvements. And, so it should be expected that as that area is built out, that sites like this are going to be necessary to service those areas. Sites like the GM site and the Amazon site cannot exist in isolation. They require fuel. Their people require food. They require places to house their, their out-of-town workers or executives. These are natural consequences of the IEC and the approval process. And, asking this single developer to agree to these written commitments, which essentially bind their hands until government actors decide that this can be done, is unfair. There are also ties financially to the project. We understand that the road improvements are going to land somewhere in 2027 per the agreement that was reached on those projects and we don't doubt it. And, again, I think you all know that Pat Matthews is one of the developers. Pat is a responsible local developer. I'm attorney for the Water and Sewer District. Pat sits on that board. He is cognizant of the import of water and sewer to projects like this. I think comment was made at committee that Pat was one of the first residential developers in St. Joe County to actually bring water and sewer to a subdivision. So, Pat's not looking to avoid the obligation. He's just not looking to be told he can't do anything with his investment until all of these other things, extrinsic factors are done. And, by anything, I mean plan or level ground or survey or drill boring holes or even start construction, knowing that construction takes months, if not years, and that at some point during the construction phase, a connection to the utilities can be made. So, in general, I agree with everything Sean said to you. I think that everything that's been presented to you has been fair. But, with the exception of the two written commitments, the first should be completely deleted in the sense that we don't know when Indot's going to act and that road does not stop this site from beginning to be developed, just as it didn't stop AWS from starting their construction. And, the second commitment, only be amended to say that we will connect to utilities the minute that they are available. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petitioner?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Thomas?
So, the city sewer and water is imperative for you, isn't it?
It is.
You just can't go along months and years without an unseptic.
Well, there are options and they are not just the city of New Carlisle. There are private wells and private utilities that exist in the state of Indiana. They are authorized by statute. If, for instance, the city of New Carlisle were not able to come through for water, would we sit on this project forever? So, there are options. But, requiring these written commitments that says we must, that we can't do anything until New Carlisle brings water, would not allow for those options.
What, you know, the development going on out there, obviously, time is of the essence. And, I know the folks in the IEC, Amazon, GM are counting on that development, that those roads being approved. Obviously, you are too. Do you have a timeframe on a negative? If it didn't, if those roads, did they drag your feet and drag your feet, if the government, the state drags your feet, is that, you don't have a, you don't have a definitive time for it, would you pull out?
No, I don't have that. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a reality that the developer wants to contemplate, just like it's probably not a reality that this board wants to contemplate or that Amazon wants to contemplate or the GM wants to contemplate. I think everybody's in it kind of together. But, at this point, it looks like it's going to happen. And, you know, again, Pat and the developer stand ready to cooperate with the process. But, no, I don't have a definitive, if it doesn't happen by this date, they're going to tuck tail and run. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council for the petitioner? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I raised a question during committee that, just for the record, I'd like for you to reiterate what was conveyed to me and became an education process for me. I had assumed that this could have been a speculative investment that by turning it to commercial, made it more valuable property, that raised revenue that would have been generated whenever Indot formalized the taking of right-of-way as part of the roadway improvements. What I learned at the time, and if you could please confirm in your professional opinion, is that the land is valued at the highest and best use, not necessarily the zoning. And, the highest and best use is determined by the Area Plan Staff and likely any appraisers who are involved in this process is going to be based on commercial use. And, that would be the basis of the value of the land appraisal, not necessarily the zoning that may change as a part of our decision, correct?
Yeah, I think you're 100% correct. And, I think at committee, my partner maybe reached out to County Attorney Pete Augustino to confirm that. But, it is my understanding that in Indiana, a taking or eminent domain or condemnation proceeding requires appraisals and that the appraisal process by state statute is required to not look at its current zoning, but its highest and best use. So, this is not a attempt by the developer to game the condemnation process, quite the opposite. This is an attempt by the developer to take advantage of active development and potentially build something of value.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council questions for the petitioner? Mr. Thomas?
I agree there is a need for that with all that development. The thing that bothers me for my constituents is the domino effect from that. And, I know there isn't going to be a need with the, with the obvious building going out there. It does bother me, though, that this starts that domino effect on two. And, I know that's not your problem.
Well, but, it is part of the rezoning petition. You know, let's be honest, that's what you're considering. You're considering where these developments begin and end. Let's look at this site, though, right? This site is on two. I think that it is a foregone conclusion that two is going to become a busier place to be. And, that is just the reality of development. But, this site is going to be on a major interchange. It's going to have infrastructure that allows it to handle the traffic that we're talking about. And, quite honestly, let's call it a fire break, right? Looking at it from a different perspective. Looking at it from a different perspective, you know, fires are stopped by actually setting fires. And so by making this land available to commercial development, there isn't an endless supply of commercial development that's going to want to come out there. At some point, there is a limit, and by making this site a preeminent development, there could be other sites, especially further off of two, that are not subject to that demand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Katandre?
Mr. Lepinotis, if I said that correctly?
As close as it has been today, so thank you.
On the rendition that we were given in committee, it shows the potential, if there is a fast-food establishment. It shows that the curb cut would be 350 feet from the intersection. Are those intentional in terms of trying to avoid areas where you think the state might put?
You know, I've gotten engineer from Aben Marsh here that my client has retained. Can I punt that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Chris Godluzki, Aben Marsh, South Bend. That's a schematic drawing because when it goes to design, it's going to be based on safety, functional limits of the intersection, guidance from indot, highway department. So it's probably close. It's not going to be exact, but that's probably a good idea. Close where it's at. Does that answer your question?
I believe it does, yeah. So I mean, I'm assuming that these predictions are trying to take into account where the intersection might locate. So I'm sure Mr. Matthews doesn't want to build something that's going to be in the middle or in the way of the future interchange.
Correct. And there will have to be some access, whether it be further south on the property, probably likely won't be on two. So it's going to be in that general vicinity regardless.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions from the Council for the petitioner?
If I may, just one quick point to Mr. Thomas's point on the statute 36-7-4-1015. I shared in Sean's reading of the statute. I don't quite understand it. I believe that this legislative body is the ultimate approval of any petition for rezoning, and I think it caught my partner off guard as well. But Sean's representation is accurate, that, you know, you may add commitments so long as they are more stringent, but by reducing the commitments, what we're asking of you here tonight is that you send this back to the APC with our proposed revised commitments for their consideration and additional public hearing. Thank you.
Mr. Klein, I do have one question for you. Are the written commitments currently part of the proposed bill?
So the APC recommendation is based on those two written commitments. So really, the only force that has now is that if you make them less stringent, it has to go back to APC. They're not really binding in any other way.
You're saying it needs to go back to the APC?
Yes. If you made the commitments less stringent, they'd have to go back to the APC.
So what's the timetable, if that is the case, for you guys to reconsider?
They'd have to consider it within 45 days, which would put them, they'd have to go on for the January APC meeting. At that point, it looks like they can ratify the written commitment or send a recommendation back to you, but then you get the final decision at that point, so.
That's what I'm trying to get clarity on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Root?
Mr. Katandre?
So if we would modify those commitments tonight, would we still conduct a public hearing this evening, or would it be after it comes back from APC?
A question for Mr. O'Brien.
So, Mr. O'Brien, your consideration is a public hearing tonight, another public hearing at the APC, and then another public hearing if it were to come back here?
I think so, because the council will be taking the actions.
Yeah.
Anything else from the Council?
Sean, I'm sorry to put you on the spot here. Can I, Mr. Root? Sorry. Land near that, again, I'm concerned about the domino effect of gas stations going on two. Can you speak to any of that, the neighboring properties by the proposed development? I know I'm telling you to be, I mean soils, water table, et cetera?
That I can't speak to, but from just strictly a land use planning perspective, I mean, we definitely share your concern. This one is, you know, adjacent to the IEC, which is why it kind of enjoyed a favorable recommendation from us. If something's located, you know, further out to the east between the IEC and Western South Bend, then I don't, we would look at that differently.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else from the Council?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katandre?
Would it be appropriate now, or not, unless we have a motion to offer up an alternate written commitment?
I think if we're going to do a public hearing, let's do the public hearing, and then we'll take a motion on that.
Thank you.
So we will open to public hearing on Bill number 98-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the Council.
Good evening, Council. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlyle. I was initially at the APC against the Travel Plaza portion of this and tried to get Mr. Studer to back off of that, but that didn't get me anywhere. I do find it sort of unfair that they, the developer keeps bringing up that anybody else who's come in there hasn't had to go through commitments like this. Anybody else, when they came in, there was corn and soybeans there. There was nothing to work around. Now there's starting to be development. You have to be careful where you put things. I'm concerned, I like the way it's written right now. I like the two existing commitments. I don't find that to be unreasonable. The developer knows the commitments are there. If that's not satisfactory, sorry, then maybe you should move on, because that's got to be built right. That intersection has to be built right. When the state comes back and says, "We're going to put it in this way", if the petitioner's already broken ground for, say, the fast food there on that corner, or the Travel Plaza a little further up, and it's all of a sudden determined, "We need to go a little deeper into the property with the divergent diamond", then they'll be back before the area board of zoning appeals to have the setbacks changed, and we'll be fighting about that. Get, don't put the cart before the horse. Get the thing built right from the start. Let the roads be put, let the divergent diamond be put in, then figure out where you're going to put your fast food, your hotel, and your Travel Plaza. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online? Hey Jen, do we have anybody online? Who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Nope. Okay. We will then move to those who wish to speak in opposition. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the Council.
Tom Rowe, 26160 Lakeland, South Bend, Indiana. Wasn't even my intention to be speaking against this bill, but with some of the prior issues that evolved over the last year and a half, I've been very mindful. I know some of you council members have had questions as far as, "Why do we always have to do it this way?" I like what Mr. Caruso was saying. Let's iron out these commitments, get a better idea as to what's really happened. I don't see anything really written at this point in time. It's almost like several of you council members in the past year have almost thought that you have, you're emotionally blackmailed or financially blackmailed to proceed because, "What are we going to lose?" And you know the council members of who I'm speaking when you were very uncomfortable with this. Once again, this pattern is appearing. It appeared at the other hearings, okay? I think you know what I'm sharing with you, and it continues now. I would hope that this gets tabled and has better resolution. And once again, "Oh, it's going to push it back this far, this far." What are we interested in? What are we interested in? Justice, evidence base, you know, comments on it? Or are we going to rush off and pass another one, just like that? Thank you.
Carol Shoemaker. I live at 315 Runaway Bay Circle, South of Grape Road in Mishawaka. I just oppose the changing of the ordinance from agricultural, changing of the district from agricultural to commercial. I think we have enough commercial development. I don't necessarily agree that development of an area is the best use of the land. I think we have too much of our land already developed. We've lost a lot of our agriculture in this state already, so.
Thank you.
My name is Joe Wilfing, 2405 Erskine Boulevard. Only reason I speak in opposition to this is, I'm in favor of the development, but I do not favor development over the interests of public safety. If indot has not approved roadway yet, we don't know the setbacks. We don't know the limitations of the footprint of new development until the states come back. So if we proceed with the development proposal, and there's issuances either with water table or something that we find during the constructions of roadways that would then limit, we're now going back two steps into redesign. So now is a good time to hold, to hold to be careful of the forward progress that the IEC area is going to implement for St. Joseph County. And the fire break, as was said. So what becomes the fire break? Today, this is the fire break. And then next, we're, the next fire break is going to be further east because development is going to develop further into South Bend. That's going to be a given. So this being a fire break is gaslighting everyone here because more development will come. You build it, they will come. So now is the time to hold and be careful of how we design the destruction of our green infrastructure on the western border of our county. We have to be cognizant of 1,000 years into the future, not 10. And that's why I say, "Hold this for now until we have a design set, and then they can implement their design planning." But to do it before, and then to have to step back two more steps in another meeting, another 45 days, what happens at the Area Plan Commission if those two issues are not addressed? If you become more stringent upon them? Or less stringent, it pushes through. So now is the time to get it right. Now is the time to get it right. So just to hold it until the Area Plan Commission, and you guys evaluate the limitations or the requirements you're placing on the developer. Development's going to happen. It's just how well are we going to implement that development? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing on Bill number 98-24 is now closed. Would the petitioner like a chance to respond? Do the objections by those who spoke in opposition?
Yeah, I will limit it, just a couple of comments, and really, it's only down to one. And I appreciate the opportunity for a response. You know, the last gentleman said something about, you know, being in favor of development but opposed to anything that might sacrifice public safety. I just want to stress again, my client is not saying that they are not going to work in conjunction with the indot site plan for the roadway there. That is not Mr. Matthews or his team's plan. His team's plan is to simply have his hands free to be able to begin the design and construction process. Developers, funds are valuable resources. They're not going to build a building in a place that could become a setback for a road. They are as keenly aware of the road design process as they can be, as indot will let them be, and they are cooperating in that process. So the idea is not to shortcut or otherwise rush development to happen before the roadway is finalized in an effort to stop roadway development. That isn't it at all. It is simply that tying this to indot or its timelines could severely hamper my client and cost them significant amounts of money. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion on Bill number 98-24?
Mr. Root?
Ms. Drake?
Can I make a motion to send this back to the APC based on the recommended, the petitioner's recommendations to delete the first commitment and to alter the second one?
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to send back to APC made by Ms. Drake, seconded by Mr. Shetzel. Any further council discussion on the motion? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is less to do with the specificity of the motion and more with the timing, if I may. A couple of comments were made by those who stepped up to the podium that we should hold off, that we should delay any action on this, one way or the other. One thing, I may have my dates wrong, and I'm going to ask Mr. O'Brien to confirm my understanding, but a recommendation that comes from the Area Plan Commission related to a zoning change, the council must act, the legislative body must act within 30 days, 90 days. But there is a time limit to that. We're already a few weeks into that time limit, and we can't just sit on these issues. For variances, it's a slightly different time limit. I believe that's 60 days. But nevertheless, the legislative body to not take action really isn't a viable option. Yes, it's a legal option, but it defers all of that responsibility back to the decision and the recommendation of the Area Plan Commission, and we are effectively not taking on the responsibility that we were elected to do. So it's not an affront to anybody who made that suggestion. It's just I wanted to identify that there are some state-bound restrictions that we have to operate within so that we actually hold up our end of the bargain for what we were elected to decide and vote on. That's all I wanted to comment on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Katandre?
Ms. Drake, just want to clarify. Are you suggesting then that the alternate be a modified written commitment, that the parcel would be connected to sewer water when it becomes available, as was suggested by the petitioner? Is that what you're, okay. I want to make sure.
The second one is altered to the petitioner's recommendation.
And I think procedurally, I could be wrong. I think you want to actually approve the rezoning subject to that modified written commitment. That way, when it goes back to APC, they can just ratify the new commitment, and then that's the final action because you already approved it.
Agreed. And if APC doesn't, they can send back, back to the council for the final decision.
Ultimately, coming back to us for the final decision.
Not if APC agrees with what you guys send back.
Okay, well, either way, we have the final decision.
So if Mrs. Drake's amendment is approved, and then the rezoning is approved subject to Mrs. Drake's amendment, goes back to APC. If APC approves, we're done.
That's it, yeah.
In essence, we're saying the same thing.
Yes.
Then it's a comeback, comes back to us again. No, it's done.
If they accept our recommendation. Only comes back to you guys again if APC disagrees with what you're sending back.
Correct.
Okay, we're good? Yes.
So how long is that going to take? 30 days? Give or take?
Yes.
That's okay.
January 21st.
Do we have time, Mr. O'Brien, for that? Okay. All right. Any further council discussion on the motion? Are we ready to vote on the motion? Cork, will you please take the roll on the motion?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanz, right?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Pass is 9-0.
The record show that was approved by a vote of 9 to 0. Now we move to... Let the record show that was approved by a vote of nine to zero. Now we move to a motion on the full bill. Is there a motion on this bill? Mr. Tanner?
Motion to approve as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner.
Second.
A motion to approve as amended made by Mr. Tanner, seconded by Mr. Katandrite. Any further council discussion on the whole bill? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only comment that I was going to make relevant to the bill as a whole was, Mr. Lupin Yodis mentioned a fire break, and there was some contention around that. I think the reason why, and I don't want to speak for them, but area plan staff was in favor of the rezoning in and of itself, separate from the written commitments. Let's just identify that. Because where this intensity of development is happening, at this higher grade, separated interchange, to rezone that to commercial means that you're concentrating the commercial next to that improvement, next to where that high volume of traffic is going to be. And if I may, that fire break is saying that if we concentrate that commercial at the immediate vicinity of where that development is happening, then you don't end up with a parcel a half mile away that gets zoned commercial because they're already in competition with the commercial that's immediately adjacent to that development. It serves as that prevention of that future spot zoning, or the deterrent to that future spot zoning. And that's why I will be voting in favor of this. I think it is the appropriate change in zoning, and it will still have to go through the appropriate authorities for design approval, site point improvement approval, approval for access by the county engineer, approval for access by INDOT, and all the other governing bodies to make sure that it is an appropriate development once the design is complete. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further council discussion? Mr. Root? Mr. Thomas?
I think the developer is very experienced. There's a need for this. Very concerned, the word responsible development going down the road is huge because just that we know all, we know how busy two is, and that is a big concern. But I think this is, this is a needed development. But going forward, we really have to be clear on responsible development. I know it's a cliche, but I think the developer has plenty of experience in moxie dealing with this. And that's why I'm probably voting yes for this.
Any further council discussion on the bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you take the roll on Bill number 98-24?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katandrite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
And President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 98-24 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Our next bill, Mr. Murphy?
Bill number 119-24, resolution determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and declaring resolution number R110-24 of the St. Joseph County Council, declaring an area of that county to be an economic revitalization area, confirming petitioner Diversified Real Estate LLC.
Committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President, Bill number 119-24 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
Terry O'Brien, Economic Development Planner. My office is on the 11th floor of this building. Diversified Real Estate LLC has submitted a tax abatement request for a 10-year real property tax abatement. The reason they've asked for the 10 years is so that it will match the 10-year lease that they are going to be entering into with their tenant. Their tenant has chosen not to seek a tax abatement for their personal property. The project site is 5.13 acres of vacant land located along McKinley Highway. Now, this land is not in a tip district, so the taxes that they will have to pay during the abatement period, plus the taxes that the tenant will pay, will immediately go into the general fund. The current taxes that are being paid on this land is approximately $1,100. During the 10-year abatement period, they will be paying approximately $206,000. And the amount that will be abated over the 10-year period is $219,000. We have seen a lot of development within this area. This is very close to American General, AM General. This is very close to the new Penn High School Field House and the new Culvers Restaurant. This will increase the momentum to this area. This has been undeveloped vacant land for a number of years. I have Mr. Augustino here to answer any additional questions that you might have in regards to this project.
Any questions for Mr. O'Brien from the council? Hearing none, petitioner?
Good evening, council members. Peter J. Augustino, attorney-at-law with offices at 131 South Taylor Street. Just to emphasize a couple of points here, we do have here a local developer, St. Joe County. We've got a local builder, McCullough Schulten, who's also here tonight, and a number of employees, nearly 100, most of which are St. Joe County employees. So I think this is an appropriate project. It is contingent upon completing the abatement because of the, it's a triple net lease arrangement. The tax savings passes through to the tenant, who's going to be occupying this to operate, the BW Cook. I also wanted to follow up on some comments that were made outside of this particular petition, but at the committee hearing, some points were made regarding abatement in general. I took a look, there was a statement made about wages or pay for our employees, and the nearly 2788 was not as competitive. I took a look at the breakdown of the wages or salaries for the types of workers that were being talked about, and we have them categorized as craft workers. And when you look at the craft workers' pay, those pay ranges are, we have some craft workers making $80,000, one making $100,000. There are some as low as 47, but generally, the craft workers average wage workers are around $30 an hour, which is, I think, what Mr. Ray represented with respect to other similar craft workers. And so this is an impactful project in the area, and I think it's one that's deserving of the abatement request made. The last comment I want to make is about Bill Belichick and Walter Payton. And I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Root for many, many years as well, and he reminds me of Bill Belichick. He's quiet, but you know where he stands. And, and to be like that, to let people know where you stand, and not be afraid of who you are is much appreciated. And then we have Mr. Sweetness, Raphael Morton, and I've enjoyed working with you as well. So I apologize for speaking out of turn there, but I wanted to share those two thoughts. I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions from the council for Mr. Augustino?
I'd just like to know how he gets Walter Payton and I get Bill Belichick.
Well, you won more Super Bowls.
Mr. Katandrite?
I think I know the answer to this, Mr. Augustino, but I'm going to ask you again. We asked this, I asked you this in committee. Did you find our tax abatement process too difficult to navigate as somebody representing the petitioner?
I think the way I've answered that, and I'll answer it again this way, is that for myself, having had access to the staff and having familiarity with it, I did not. I, but I do think it's important to have, to be able to access the staff in that, in approaching that.
And that's your job. That's what we pay our staff to do, is to help people navigate the process if they have difficulty with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Ms. Drake?
Mr. Augustino, could, could the abatement be made more flexible, the whole process?
A number of years ago, I was at a wake for a teacher, and he had been awarded Teacher of the Year award, and I read his, the application process there. And he made a statement that stuck with me ever since. And that statement was that satisfaction is death. And that, the reason that stuck with me is that if you're satisfied and don't want to change or improve anymore, you're going to start dying. So I would answer that by saying there's always room for improvement. There always is. And, and I think that there could be some improvement with the abatement ordinance in St. Joe County.
Any further questions from the council for Mr. Augustino? Hearing none, we'll move to public hearing on Bill number 119-24. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing no one, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak in opposition? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening. Brock Booselich, 4172 Ralph Jones Court, business manager, a local 172 plumbers and pipe fitters. And I don't believe that an abatement for a contractor in our county is the right thing to do. Most of us contractors are self-funded and giving taxpayers money for a contractor to build a new facility. I don't believe that's the right thing to do. We do the right things. And some of you might not agree with what we do as being a union and being contractors, but we are self-funded, and we take care of our members. We have healthcare. We provide pensions, and we have good-paying jobs for our members. And when you're going to give tax abatement money out for a contractor who's going to benefit himself, I don't agree with that. And I would ask any of my building trades members here tonight to stand up and support me in that, and I guarantee they will. But a tax abatement for things like that does not help our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who wishes to speak in opposition? All right, the public hearing on Bill number 119-24 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill, please?
Motion to send favorably.
Motion to?
Approve. Excuse me. I was in committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to approve was made by Mr. Thomas, was seconded by Mr. Fig. Any further council discussion on this bill?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katandrite?
I just would have wanted to address the one person who spoke in opposition because I think you made some very valid points. However, I would say that it is unique that a contractor has come to us and asked us to support them in a tax abatement, but it's actually the, the land developer that's asking us to do that so they can pass those savings on to that contractor. And I think you made some very valid points. I didn't catch your name, sir, from local 172?
Brock.
Brock Booselich?
Yeah.
I, I think you made some very valid points, but we have been evaluating this for a couple of months. We've been looking at what the, what the relocation of this business from Elkhart County to St. Joe County was going to bring to our county. We thought the value of bringing their nearly 100 employees over from Elkhart County to St. Joe County was worth considering an abatement or tax phase-in on this project. And that may be, not in agreement with how you feel, but I think that's why you will see some support for that tonight, and that's why I'll be supporting this tonight. But I wanted to explain that. Thank you.
Any further council comment on the bill? Mr. Root? Mr. Thomas?
I want to echo Mr. Katandrite's comments. Very valid points by this gentleman. We've looked over this for the last couple of months, and I've only been on the council a couple of years. I think this is the first one of its kind, the developer is seeking that. And his comments are well-taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comment? If not, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katandrite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Yes.
And President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 119-24 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Our next bill is 123-24. Mr. Murphy?
Bill number 123-24, ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County public way or public place. Petitioners, Richard and Tammy Kasmirzak.
Committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President, Bill number 123-24 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Mr. Klein?
Yeah, Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission staff. This is a petition to vacate the unimproved alley highlighted on the screen. This is in Penn Township, south of Osceola. Staff recommends approval of the vacation. It's unimproved, doesn't provide access to any properties currently, and all other parcels have frontage on other rights of way. Beyond that, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the council for Mr. Klein? Don't see them. What is the council's preference?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Katandrite?
Per our rules, I request you to return to the committee.
Can you make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to send back to committee, per our rules? All those in favor of sending back to our committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Bill number 123-24 goes back to committee. Mr. Murphy, Bill number 124-24, please?
Bill number 124-24, ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council amending Title 15, Chapter 154, land usage of the St. Joseph County Code regarding floodplain regulations. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Area Plan Commission.
Committee report, please.
Yes, Mr. President, Bill number 124-24 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Klein?
Yeah, Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission staff. So periodically, the federal and state government alter the floodplain regulations such that in order to continue to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, we need to amend our local ordinances. That's essentially what this is accomplishing. It's based on a model ordinance provided by the Indiana DNR and will bring us back into compliance with all state and federal regulations such that we can ensure that our residents continue to have their flood insurance. Currently, we do have 124 flood insurance policies on the, in the unincorporated county, and those cover an amount of $32,826,000. A lot of this, I know the, the redlining is kind of intimidating, but a lot of it's just being restructured, and then there's a few substantive changes outlined on the screen and in your staff report. Besides the unincorporated county, the towns within the APC are currently doing the same, essentially. Beyond that, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the council, from Mr. Klein? Seeing none, we are ready for a public hearing on Bill number 124-24. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone online? Anyone in the room wish to speak in opposition? Anyone online? I do see one hand online. Go ahead. You have three minutes to address the council. Please give us your name and address.
Charlotte Wolf, 21439 Osborne Road, Lakeville. I just want to speak in favor of, of this ordinance because I, I feel like our county needs to keep up with, with changing conditions in our water table and our floodplain areas to make sure that we're in compliance, not only for insurance reasons, but just because we need to make sure that we take care of wetlands and we take care of water. Increased development is going to increase water flow off of areas, and we need to retain water on, on our land. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public hearing on Bill number 124-24 is now closed. May I have a motion on the bill? May I have a motion on the bill?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Mr. Tanner, seconded by Mr. Fig. Any further council discussion? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Shetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Root?
Yes.
Passes nine-zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 124-24 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. There has been a request that we take a short break, if the council is willing. Council preference on taking a break?
I'd like to.
Anybody good? We will reconvene the council at 8:25. To that time, we stand in recess.
I don't keep it long, Raphael. You wanna take a long? Pretty good, how you doing?
Are you taking that?
No.
My lack of response about it.
Can't believe it, you and Raphael, fifty-two years. I didn't wanna say that, Raphael, publicly, but fifty-two years. Now, that may be as long as the county's kind of half-old or whatever.
I picked out the rest of the seven of you. The rest of the seven, you have fifty years.
Yeah, try. You got more than the rest combined.
I'm like, oh my God. You saw me.
Yeah, it was good, I talked to.
I couldn't hold it back.
Yes, yes. Yes, about to watch. I tried, that's why I said.